Mayor, would you like to proceed?
Yes.
Good evening. This is the Meeting of Borough Highlands Mayor and Council Special Meeting on Wednesday, September fourteenth. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice that this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Clark Press and the Two River Times and by policy at the Borough of Highlands Municipal Building and finally with the Borough Clark on September ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Items listed in the agenda are subject to change. I will now be vocal. Councilmember Sabantes.
Here.
Councilmember Chlack.
Here.
Councilmember Melnick. Council President Shesky.
Here.
Mayor Brien.
Here.
We have a forum. Please stand for the Pledge of Leagues. And I'll hand it over to you, Mayor.
Good evening. We called this, well, this meeting was scheduled back in the beginning of May, but the reason for it was to give us an update as to what's going on with our regionalization plans. If you were at our last council meeting, I gave a brief synopsis of where you were at the point. And a lot of folks have been asking if this is going to be on the November ballot. Let me be the first person to tell you that no, this will not be on the November ballot this year. There are other times that a school ballot measure can be taken place. And the next one would be December.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday in December, and the one following that would be the fourth Tuesday in March.
January.
January. January, then March. So there's all of these other places that we can get this thing done. We're trying to work together with everyone. As everyone knows, it's not an easy thing. We have six separate entities, and we're all trying to get a common thing accomplished, which is, I think we've made great strides in that we have never before come this close. We've been talking about this for decades. We've been seriously, in my opinion, talking about it for the last five or so years. We did agree to the, no, the funding formula was agreed on by all six entities. Those resolutions were all passed. What we're stuck on right now is a, this cost savings or save sharing. It has different names. However, I can tell you that no one in the state of New Jersey does this thing that was first introduced at the five twenty-five meeting at the high school with the combined boards. So it's brand new. No one else has ever done it in this state. I don't know about other states. Didn't have enough time to research that. But that's where we are. With there's, you know, numbers thrown around back and forth, we're all, for the most part, still speaking and trying to get this worked out. And as I said, there are other places where we could get this to the vote so that the people can vote on this. With that, I would like to give it over to Vito and Carrie, our attorneys, to give us more of a flavor of where we started, where we are now, and where we are looking to get towards.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. So let me begin by simply providing a little more detail to the update that the mayor just provided. So certainly the historic significance of what we are looking to accomplish cannot be understated. We're working under a new statute that has not been used before, and ultimately, the decisions are not made by any municipal body or any school board. The decision's made by the voters. So the discussions that the mayor was referencing, really a discussion about what it is that the six governing entities would ask the Commissioner of Education for approval to submit to the voters, who would then decide whether or not they want to entertain a change in the structure of the educational programming for their communities. So we had gotten so far in our discussions that approximately two months ago, the three municipal governing bodies in Seabright Towns, Atlantic Islands, and the three Boards of Education all agreed on terms of a petition and submitted a joint petition to the Commissioner of Education, seeking the Commissioner's approval to submit to the voters a question about whether or not to form a K-12 regional school district serving Highlands and Atlantic Highlands, and whether or not Seabright should be part of that region. When it was submitted, the six entities had not agreed on the tax allocation, which by law has to be part of the question. So what we said essentially to the Commissioner of Education is here are all feasibility studies. Here's the analysis. Here's what the municipalities and the school boards want to do. The municipalities and the school boards will be negotiating a funding formula, which we will submit to the Commissioners, that the Commissioner can decide whether to grant the petition or not. Again, a petition seeking permission to submit these questions to the public. It was the hope and expectation that there would be an agreement on the tax allocation methodology by the end of August, which would have been sufficient time if the Commissioner acted within a few weeks to allow the matter to be presented to the public in November. What you're looking for, and the deadline was September ninth, is enough time for the question, which includes a tax allocation methodology to be approved by the Commissioner, so that absentee ballots can be printed and distributed. So that's why it's a November election, but the deadline was September ninth. Obviously, the Commissioner doesn't have all the data yet, so no surprise that September ninth passed without a ruling from the Department of Education. So the effort to determine how the new school district will be funded has played out for the most part publicly. I don't know that it benefits anyone to talk about the parts that haven't played out publicly simply because the entities are still in negotiation, but you saw the resolutions passed by the six governing entities. That is, a methodology for allocating the tax levy between equalized property value and per pupil as eighty-five fifteen. But then there was introduced in discussions amongst the three school boards and presumably Atlantic Highlands, this idea of cost sharing between Highlands and Atlantic Highlands. As we understood it when it was first initiated, it was, it's called cost sharing, but it's not really cost sharing, it's savings sharing. That is to say, what makes for the savings in a Seabright Highlands and Atlantic Highlands regional school district is the contribution from Seabright. And so the idea was to try to even out, to some extent, the savings enjoyed by Highlands and Atlantic Highlands to allocate how the savings, which again are almost exclusively as a result of the Seabright contribution to the tax levy, allocated between the communities. The one thing I will say about the negotiations, because in some respects it's self-evident, I think, is complimentary to the mayor and council. And before you dismiss what I'm going to say as, well, of course, these people are hired by the mayor and council, of course, they're going to compliment them. What really transpired a year or so ago was an agreement by Seabright and Highlands to split the costs of using our firm, meaning that if I said something to Mayor Mike and she said, okay, you guys are fired, it just means that Seabright's paying a hundred percent, not fifty percent. So there's nothing for me to gain by the compliment I'm going to pay here. The discussions were such that the mayor and council here, looking back on the relationship between Highlands and Atlantic Highlands in terms of Henry Hudson funding, were that the mayor and council were not inclined to engage in any cost sharing or savings sharing, whatever you're going to talk about. But at the end of the day, what we are looking to place before these three communities in a historic first is a situation where we think the communities can enjoy a better educational program for less money. And that is a rare thing to be able to present to taxpayers, where you can get them something that you perceive to be better, and you can demonstrate it will be for significantly less. So as a result, the mayor and council agreed that they would allow some sort of cost sharing. And so that's why you saw it in the resolutions. And that was a significant concession by the Borough of Highlands, and that's the hallmark, of course, of any negotiation, it's right, given, paid by all sides. The issue that the parties are stuck on right now is the issue of whether or not, whatever type of cost sharing is negotiated, should be in perpetuity or something that is looked at yearly or periodically in some respect. And as the mayor pointed out, there is no such thing right now where there's a sort of cost sharing. Now, that shouldn't puzzle anyone, because the statute that was newly adopted, that's never been used before, provides for flexibility that didn't exist. So if you wanted to form a regional district before this statute was passed in January, you had to pick hundred percent equalized property value, hundred percent per pupil funding, or some combination thereof. And then once that was approved, it was locked in, not to be varied, for ten years. And if after ten years you wanted to change it, you had to submit it to the voters again. So the opportunity to have a tax allocation that is not static, but that can be modified on an annual basis, is something that didn't exist in the state of New Jersey before. So the question is how to do it. And one other thing I want to say, as it relates to all of the municipalities, not just the ones I'm privileged enough to represent, the issue here is not so much, I save money, you don't save money, you save money, I don't save money. It is an effort to present something to the public that the public perceives as fair, that the public can embrace, because you're asking people to change the status quo, right? For whatever pluses or minuses you might say about the educational structure for any of these three towns, if you're going to change it, you want to be able to explain to the taxpayers why it's better for them. And if you can explain why it's better for them, I assure you, having done this many times, the next question is, okay, that's fine, but what if X? What if Y? What if something changes? What protections are there that we are going to continue to save money? That we're not going to wind up in the position Seabright finds itself, where to the tune of millions of dollars you are subsidizing your neighbor's educational programming in a way that absent a regional district, if you use the subsidy, you get it to form a state aid, not neighboring towns. And so what the statute does is allow you to say to the public in some respects, we don't think X will happen, but if it does, there are certain protections here, so you shouldn't be concerned about what you don't know or what you can't see, because if something that seems unlikely but could occur were to transpire, there are certain protections in the formula that the voters have approved. And that is where we currently find ourselves. That is to say, it's not a matter of any community or any entity saying, I want to grab as much as I can. It's this balance between making sure that what you present to the public is attractive enough for each of the communities that it will garner support that the public officials hope that it garners. And clearly, that's not going to be something that the public gets to consider in November. As the mayor mentioned, the parties are continuing to talk. We may do so with the assistance of a state official, but as close as we are, no one is talking about abandoning this historic initiative. We're talking about how to continue to twist this Rubik's Cube, how to get this last piece to line up so that the leaders in each of the communities can proudly go before the public and say, we think this is in your best interest, and if something changes that we don't expect, you are still assured of a certain level of protection. And I don't know if Carrie wants to add anything to that, but after, I defer to Carrie, happy to answer questions to the mayor and council, and of course, to the Pledge of Mayors.
Before I begin, may I note that Councilmember Melnick arrives at six forty-five? Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I have anything to add to. I don't have anything to add to that, but I will happily answer questions with Vito if they're going to open it up to the public as well, or if there's something else from the mayor and council that you'd like us to address.
We just want a brief overview of where we were, where we're going, when the next possible elections could be, and that everything's not dead in the water. We're still talking. We're trying to get there, so maybe not to crack, and we're still working on it not cracking. Is there any question that you have for Vito? Yeah, no, sure. Sure. Yeah, good.
So, Vito, you said we're trying to make this equitable or palatable to both, to the taxpayers of the towns. Then can you explain, I don't understand why the Atlantic Highlands governing body, they don't wish to lessen the tax burden on the hardworking citizens of both our towns. Can you answer that? I mean, is it?
He doesn't represent a lot of towns.
No, I know, I know. I guess I'm just talking in generalities here, but that's something, they want it to be fair on both sides, and yet they have a higher tax base than we have here in Highlands. They have more students, a hundred fifty students more, and yet they want it to be equal. I'm just trying to wrap my head around it and just to figure out what they're thinking. And that's about it.
Maybe you should go to Atlantic Highlands and ask them directly.
That's not a bad idea. Mr. Sabantes, do you have any questions?
Not really. I'm just trying to understand the whole situation here. Like I said, there's a lot of questions to ask him, but I don't understand the situation with the local Highlands. I understand it's not a question for you, it's for them, but I have the same concern.
There's something else, too, I'd like to say about the school superintendent. Why does, why does the superintendent and the board or their legal team assume that they get to make these decisions rather than the taxpayers of the towns? Another thing, you know, they're very involved in it, and again, that's perhaps a question that can't be answered right now, but I'd really love to know the answer. Maybe we should go to a school board meeting and ask directly why that is. You know, the last time I looked, we don't pay salary, their salaries, so.
Well, we pay half for salary, that pays the other half, okay. But if you want to ask your elected school board members for the Borough of Highlands why they're okay with giving away hundreds of taxpayer dollars, I suggest you go to the school board. If there's nothing else, please go through that.
Individuals wishing to address the council may be recognized by the presiding officer at target their name, address in the group that need to represent, although the council encourages public participation, resists the right, which presiding officer to terminate remarks to and or by any individual not in keeping with the conduct of a proper and efficient meeting. If any individual refuses to conduct themselves in a proper manner, they will be removed from the meeting. The council will not, during the public portion of this meeting, discuss matters involving employment, appointments, termination of employment, negotiations, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of the performance of promotion or discipline of any specific or perspective of a current employee. There's a three-minute timeout minute for your comments. Please state your name and address.
Would you like to do what's the order of going first? Okay, if you could please, just for, for to get all of your comments.
I'm twenty-nine, I'm in Atlantic Highlands. My heart is still in Highlands, out of here for forty years. Of more than that, of fairness, so I'd like to ask the force of the team, were you contacted by Atlantic Highlands before they took a vote on having their attorney contact the county Board of Education for a meeting over for this?
We were, yes. So we were asked if we would be willing to participate in mediation. I consulted, as I have had on many occasions, with the leadership of the governing body, mayor and the governing body here, as well as in Seabright, and our clients said that they'd be willing to participate in a mediation. So there's been no scheduled date yet, but we agreed that the county superintendent could mediate this. Obviously, it's a mediation, so it's not binding on anybody, but you need an independent third party somehow to get folks talking constructively about compromise. And certainly in the case of Highlands and Atlantic Highlands, you know, get, let's not call it cost sharing, well, that's the phraseology that they use, it's really savings sharing. Well, the savings sharing is pretty easy without this vote, right? It's zero. Both parties get to save zero, and they share zero. So respectfully, it doesn't make sense not to figure out a way to resolve this, but I think if you're going to approach it with any type of Machiavellian strategy, you have to discuss honestly what you need to do to make it attractive, not just in your town, but the other towns. Tasked in every town where nothing happens. And I'm hopeful that a county superintendent, and this is, you have a very experienced one here, will help the parties to see the virtue of compromise and the importance of having something that is attractive to each of the communities, or else you have nothing.
I'm certainly not against the mediation, and I certainly understand that. And I know mediation makes both sides happy, both sides unhappy, but it resolves the issue. I'm very familiar with all of that. My question is, why ever would you have somebody from the education field rather than somebody who's from the mediation field and is a professional in mediation handle a mediation of this importance?
So, believe it or not, this is actually a role that county superintendents play all the time when it comes to tax allocations. Does it make it right? Perhaps not, but in response to the idea of whether or not they have experience. So when school budgets are voted on, if they're voting down, which obviously doesn't happen under the new structure, but it does happen all the time, if the municipal body and the school board couldn't reach an agreement, the county superintendent would mediate the issue and come to a tax levy. So ironically, in the narrow area we're talking about, what a tax levy looks like, county superintendents do that all the time.
But that's when it comes to the educational part of it as well. This has nothing to do with the education. This is strictly to do with cost sharing. So why not have a professional mediator, not somebody who's experienced in doing it because of the educational sidelines of it?
Well, they see that they used to mediate all the time, and as you say, doesn't make it right, but the issue that they used to mediate is this exact issue, what should the tax levy be, right? So county superintendents should mediate this all the time. I've not been asked the question publicly, and I'm actually, I'm not asking the question privately, but if this is unsuccessful, would we, as attorneys, be willing to recommend to our client, working with a professional mediator? Typically, in an area of a litigation dispute, I'll speak to myself, and I'd like to carry. I have a huge bias in favor of retired judges. We have several in our firm, I've worked with several, I had one last week. These are folks who resolve cases all the time, right? Ninety percent of all, over ninety percent of all cases that everybody knows is settled, they're not tried, right? And they're typically settled where the judge calls the parties and then say, what are we going to resolve this? So I think if the county superintendent doesn't work, I'd be perfectly happy to try a professional mediator, which from my viewpoint typically is best served by a former judge.
By a what?
Former judge, or justice.
There you go. Why don't you suggest that before we employ somebody that is strictly on the education side of it? And I understand what you're saying, that it mediates when people, you know, vote down a budget, but now you're talking two towns, and you're talking not education, you're talking money. And you said that your second choice, if this didn't work, would be a professional mediator. Why can't that be your first choice? And why can't you recommend that to the labor attorney? And see, that's my concern. The labor attorney in Atlantic Highlands has said many, many times, he's a labor attorney, kind of has an excuse for if he gooks or if he doesn't know everything, he's already said he doesn't know how to add very well, and things like that. If you get somebody else that's not a professional mediator, are we going to go through this again? Well, you know, I'm not a professional mediator, so you've got to excuse me for this. Are we just getting deeper into a hole that's going to be very difficult to get out of it, if Highlands doesn't stand up and fight for Highlands? No offense to this council, but I'm disappointed that this room isn't a standing room only as well. I don't know where the Highlands taxpayers, I know the mayor, I'm not critical of the mayor, I know that she's putting out all the information that she can, but I don't understand why Highlands taxpayers aren't here to ask the questions that I'm asking.
Well, perhaps they're taking the mayor's advice, and they're saving their time to go ask the school board some of these questions, I don't know.
Not one of the three school boards has ever had anything to say about regionalization. I don't know that any member on any of the three school boards knows anything about regionalization to answer any questions on it. They've never spoken at a meeting on it, they've never attended these meetings, I don't see, I don't know all the board members, I don't know any of the board members of any of the boards.
There are some here.
There are some here. Okay, I don't know them so much, it's unfair for me to say that, but I've never, I don't hear them speak. I heard Henry Hudson Board President speak after a meeting one time, but it was after the meeting was over. So I don't always count that as talking at a meeting either, because it's not recorded. If we are talking mediation, whether we're doing it with a professional mediator, as we should be doing, or whether we're doing it with a, by the way, if we have this mediation with the county superintendent, does, do we pay him for that?
No.
Just the taxpayers rule them on, they can't pay him for that.
Well, whether he's mediating with us or doing something else, they were paying, they do pay him for that day anyway, so it is.
Well, if he's got the time to do it, then he's getting no more pay to begin with, so. I mean, it's taking time from something else. But my next question is, if we are going with a mediator, and this is all a brand-new thing, and I appreciate that, and I know it's because of the governance law that was passed in January, and I appreciate all that, why can't we start everything from the beginning? Does anybody have any idea, and I guess I should ask the mayor this, and I don't expect an answer, I lost the top of your head, but does anybody have any idea of how much money Highlands taxpayers have paid over and above the tax, the school tax, simply because that school is located in Highlands? And shouldn't that be taken into consideration? Shouldn't it be taken into consideration that's a crying piece of real estate up there? And I remember when it went for a school, I was here then, and a crying piece of real estate, that Highlands is missing a lot of tax money on it because we can't build residences up there, or even any more townhouses, because we, I told you where my heart is, but Highlands can't build anymore up there because it is school property and not taxable. So can't we start to take some of that into consideration? If we're going to talk cost sharing, can't we share all of the costs that Highlands taxpayers have been bearing for fifty years?
Well, if you're talking about the taxes that you forego because the property isn't taxed, that's one thing. If you're talking about the costs associated with police and fire protection for public property at large, you know, if this were to come to fruition, there would basically be three campuses, right? There's the Henry Hudson campus, there's the Highlands School, and there's the Atlantic.
Right.
I have no idea whether the municipal services associated with those properties and/or the taxes that you forego with those properties, I have no idea what they would be. I think that the focus is on reducing the annual taxes borne by the people in the three communities. So I don't know, and having done several of these, there has never been an occasion, which I'm aware, in which that was part of the assessment of the costs or the savings, the that being the taxes that you forego or the municipal services provided. So I respectfully suggest that this is complicated enough, and introducing a variable like that probably would not help us get closer together. That doesn't mean that it's wrong, it just means that it may not be productive.
But we're chatting new territory here. We've got a new law, more set in the standard for the state of New Jersey. Highlands is going to have two schools in the tri-district, not just one, two schools in the tri-district that we in Highlands are going to be paying for the police to go to. It's our first, Highlands First Aid, I'm sorry, it's Highlands First Aid, but I have to answer all these calls. It's the wear and tear on Highlands Road. It's the wear and tear on Highlands roads. If we're charting new territory, why not take all of this into consideration?
Muriel, just to be a hundred percent clear, you're talking about the municipal cost, not the school's cost. Municipal cost to have, not fire, but we pay for the apparatus, fire, ambulance.
You bet you we do.
Dr. Big, please move to Hartman, get called, it's on Atlantic Highlands, that's coming over to Hudson. Sorry? Oh, it's no removal on all of our streets to actually get to the schools, crossing guards, it's endless. Yes, it's, it's almost to the, you're only looking at one piece of property, well, actually, it's technically three, but at Hudson. But that's one piece of property that, yes, the dollar amount on that is over twelve million dollars, the last time that I checked that number, over twelve and a half million dollars, to be frank. And that would be a lot of taxes.
I was around here long enough to know when that road up to Henry Hudson was not a paved road. Certainly, there were no sidewalks, and it was not a paved road, and the children in Highlands, the students in Highlands did not have a bus to get up there. These are all costs and conveniences that Highlands taxpayers had nothing to do with the school, but we had to do it because it was another building in the town, and we had to protect it, and of course, we had to protect the children that are going up there. I just think that these should be points brought up in a mediation. Like I said, if we're starting, if we're charting new territory, let's chart all the new territory, and let's get that part of it.
I don't want to go too deep into what our strategy in mediation would be, not in a public meeting.
Of course.
But those are all, we're talking about the shared, shared savings piece of it, and if we're going to be talking about shared savings, that is certainly something that on behalf of Highlands, we can bring up during that mediation as far as, look, if we're going to be, one of the things we would need to go into detail on, and we're not going to here, is to try to figure out, well, what does that shared service, shared savings look like? What goes into it? How do we calculate it? How does it get paid? There are a number of issues that are still outstanding, and your points are good as far as a piece of that being all of those factors that you just raised. So you think that those factors are something that will be discussed at some point during mediation?
I certainly hope so. And then I misunderstood you, I know that you were contacted and you agreed to a mediator. Have they contacted the Commission of Education, or haven't you been told anything worse since you agreed to do it?
The last communication work that we've had is that the attorney for the school boards said that they would let, unless I answered the county superintendent, know that we were willing to mediate with him, and my expectation is the next thing I do will be something from the county office trying to stay away.
And do we know who the mediators will be? Who the two sides will be represented by?
So who the side we represented by is a very interesting question, because one of the complicated factors with the negotiations over the tax levies taken place to date is that because we represent Seabright and Highlands, we were not involved in the discussions held directly between the mayors to come to the original proposal on the tax allocation, on the cost savings, but the allocation that, as now submitted before the public, is eighty-five fifteen, equalized property value and per pupil enrollment. So after our clients reached an agreement, they have their own attorneys they consult with, they have the financial expert we used, that was only after that that we got involved. To this moment, the school boards are represented, the three school boards are represented by the same board, and obviously Highlands and Atlantic Highlands, it would seem to me, would not have precisely the same interests. I don't know what the school boards are going to do, which is why I can't answer your question in terms of who's going to participate in mediation. To the extent my clients reached a position that they were comfortable with, we don't have a conflict, we can participate. If no lawyers are going to participate, then, you know, they may be the experts used by each side there, we've not had any discussion about who it might be, but it's certainly more complicated for the school boards.
And so it might be attorneys doing the mediation?
We've had no discussion about it. As you've heard, the critical issue right now is the cost sharing between Highlands and Atlantic Highlands.
Right.
Well, I only have one client in that discussion, so that's easy for us. Atlantic Highlands, the gentleman you mentioned, the borough special counsel, he only has one client.
Right.
But the attorneys representing the school boards are on both sides of the issue, so I don't know whether it's going to be municipal officials and/or attorneys and/or the financial experts, we've had no discussions about who might be present.
Are you going to have any say in who's going to be the mediators, or is the mayor going to have any say in it?
Of course. We just haven't had any discussions about it. It doesn't mean that we're leaving entirely the chance, we just have to talk about it.
Okay. And then I would also strongly suggest, only because I listened to the minutes of the meeting, Dr. Beams apparently is very, very friendly with Atlantic Highlands, and very, the council, some council members indicated the only reason why they voted for anything at all is because she is so good and she has done so much for Atlantic Highlands. I would be a little hesitant, because I don't know, I haven't heard her say how wonderful Highlands is, and it doesn't seem like that would be an equitable thing if Dr., well, an employee being involved in a mediation, I don't see as an equitable thing anyway, but it doesn't appear that Dr. Beams feels that Highlands is quite as good as Atlantic Highlands, as least from some of the things that I've heard. So I would think that that would put you in a bad position to begin with, with any mediation. But that's only my opinion. Thank you kindly, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're a fullback tomorrow.
Yeah.
Those names, we should be a problem.
Yeah, mine are black.
Charlie Rooney, 196 Ocean Avenue, Seabright. First of all, thanks for putting this meeting together tonight, Mayor. And I also want to thank the Highlands mayor and council for putting a hole into this forever resolution that seemed to pop up. In Seabright, back in nineteen sixty-two, Seabright made a forever agreement with Shore Regional. I went to Shore Regional, I graduated Shore Regional, actually in seventy-seven. What happened, I was actually a junior, I think, in high school at that time at Shore, and my father was a councilman in Seabright. And I ended up coming home one night, very emotional, saying, "The Board of Ed just ripped the heart out of our town, they closed our school." That was our Seabright Public School. Back in sixty-two, when we made that forever agreement, we never anticipated that happening. We had a Board of Ed that had a couple older gentlemen on it, and at the time, the Seabright Public School needed sixty thousand dollars worth of repair to bring it up to code, that would have raised the taxes in Seabright. So the elderly gentleman on the Board of Ed said, "I got a better idea. Let's close the school and send the kids to Oceanport." And when that happened, that changed Seabright forever. From that day on, we continued to have less students, and continued to pay our share at Shore Regional. So the point I'm making is, what you have done here is you have protected Highlands and Atlantic Highlands, because nobody can predict the future. You just, there's just no way. So forever is not a good word. Whatever you guys come up with, the cost savings between the two towns, you know, I do believe in an negotiation, at the end of the day, you have to really consider not so much who's winning or losing, but how much you're going to save. You might not save as much as the other town, but you will save something. And, you know, you want fifty-fifty, but at the end of the day, you want to make sure that this gets to the taxpayers to decide, because ultimately, it's their decision. It's not Mayor Blue or, you know, any, it's just, that's not the way it goes. It needs to go out to the taxpayer, because at the end of the day, they flip the bill. Something else I was just going to ask was about the state funding that continues to get reduced, the amount of money that's getting taken back every year from the state, it normally goes into the school budget. There's some sort of a formula where if you do form a pre-K through twelve, the reduction is less, and if you, right, if you don't form the pre-K, right, and you don't, it goes more. So the question that I want to have answered, like, when the money is reduced from the school budget, and somehow the Board of Ed sort of balances the budget, don't the kids suffer somewhere? Like, is something getting reduced from that school, like, to make up the loss? I'm not sure what the numbers are, but, you know, I think it's, what do they take out each year? Like, over the last five years, how much money has the state taken back, say from Henry Hudson, in the funding?
I can't give you a total off the top of my head, but I can tell you what the inducement is in the law. So the adjustment aid that the state has provided for some time, where if, under the formula they use, your state aid is being reduced, they give you other aid to make sure that you don't feel that reduction. And it is this adjustment aid that the state decided to phase out, separate and apart from the law that allows you to form this regional district. One of the inducements in the law is that adjustment aid is being phased out over a four-year period. If you were to form a K-12 regional under this law, just as you described, they would phase it out over an eight-year period instead of a four-year period. So there'd be hundreds of thousands of dollars in aid that you wouldn't otherwise get. Now, it's not so much whether the kids are going to suffer, it's if you don't get the money from the state, you've got to raise it from the local taxpayers, right? So it's really an inducement, if you form a regional district, in addition to whatever savings your efficiencies provide you, you will also save taxpayer money, because the state will provide you more aid than you would get without it. Phase out four years, if you don't form the regional district, phase out over eight, so a much longer tail, twice as long, obviously, if you form the regional district. So that's just another inducement, and again, to get back to the point I made earlier, and certainly when Smith was speaking, right, when we talked about how to share the savings, if you don't do something to form a K-12 district in the next year or two, whatever the...
I think the whole harmless in the statute was studying it through the grant process gives you, I want to say it's two years.
I think, that's what I was going to say.
But if you don't actually form a regional school district within that time period, then it stops and it goes back to the prior mechanism, so that reduction will continue.
So again, if we, if the parties don't reach an agreement and submit something to the voters, if the voters find acceptable, you would be leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars in additional state aid on the table, which is an extraordinary point. In my view, by the way, almost as extraordinary as my discovery this evening, that based upon the new graduate high school, you're five years older than me, there is literally no one who would look at you and go, "I think you're five years older." So it's really been an extraordinary session we've had here, Mr. Rees.
I got to get here.
I'm five years younger.
All right, so no, really, I mean, when you talk about these numbers, though, it really doesn't make sense to figure out how to get this done, the taxpayer benefits and the students benefit. I mean, you just, to not do it, it's almost like, well, like I swam today with the tide, it would have been like swimming against the tide, right? This doesn't make any sense. And I just like to always bring up the fact that there were two feasibility studies done, one by the political firm and one by the Board of Ed. They insisted that they wanted to have their own feasibility study, and each feasibility study cost, I think, over fifty grand, and they came up with the same results, the meeting up in Henry Hudson, they couldn't say it more often, do this as soon as possible. They almost wanted us to do it that night, the way they were, it just seemed like, get it done, you're losing money every day that you don't do this. And the last thing I'm just trying to figure out with these Board of Eds, because it doesn't seem like they're saying much, I do agree with what Muriel said, this fifty-fifty and, you know, forever, I mean, is the Highlands Board of Ed supportive of that? I mean, have they spoke up and said, "Whoa, I don't, I don't, I don't get that part of it?"
We direct you to go to a Highlands Board of Ed meeting, because we can't answer for them, they're a whole separate body.
Was anybody with you on the Highlands Board of Ed?
Yeah, but we're not going to engage in that.
Okay, oh, they can't talk about that?
Well, no, they...
Well, I mean, if I was on the Board of Ed, I would be saying, "Whoa, this doesn't seem like it's good for our town."
Go to a Highlands Board of Ed meeting and speak with the Board of Ed. If you want to go to the Highlands Elementary, their meeting is Monday night. If you want to go to a Henry Hudson meeting, that's the twenty...
I plan these meetings on nights that work, I suppose.
Oh, yeah, well, I'll get you a full list, so you can get all of the meetings.
All right, once again, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You know, before anyone else gets up, because it's only now that it's been mentioned a couple of times, the funding formula that was worked out between the three mayors, and then we went back to our councils, and everybody was on board, and we said, "Okay, great." That was done in, we had lunch three times, the three of us, and we all sat around the table, and we ate together, it's an Italian thing, if you don't know. And we came upon a formula that we found would work for everyone. And let me explain to you that process, because I don't think we've explained it enough, even though there's been a lot of talking. As you may or may not know, Seabright spends about seventy-five thousand dollars per pupil, probably more than that. I'm not taking talking just about Shore, I'm saying altogether. Shore and Shorewood two forth together, it's about seventy-five thousand dollars per pupil. We're in the twenties. So what we were trying to do was, we were trying to do the best thing for three separate towns. We were trying to get seventy-five thousand plus down to as much to half as we could. We were trying to get the most savings for Atlantic Highlands at the same time of cutting theirs as much in half as we could, and just by happenstance, Highlands, we're in the middle. So we were going to win no matter who, you know, no matter what number we come up with. So that's how we came to eighty-five fifteen, because that took Seabright seventy-five thousand plus per kid, and even though it's still high, but it made it, it made it forty-three thousand dollars per pupil. Still high, but it's not seventy-five plus. In that scenario, I'll try to see what the savings were. Atlantic Highlands was going to have about eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars worth of savings. These are all calculators from made-up time in the future, five years from now, when we have no idea if any of this is going to happen, but I'll give you these numbers anyway. And then Highlands would have a million six in savings.
Daniel.
Yes, annual, these numbers are all annual.
Absent, absent any...
Well, absent, absent...
Absent any, any shared savings.
Oh, no, no, that isn't, like I said, we're talking about the funding formula only, that the three mayors sat down, ironed all this out, got savings for everybody, we brought it back to our respective councils, everyone was on board, and it was painless.
Yes.
Now, this other, that no one's ever heard of, cost sharing, saving sharing, weirdness, whatever, was never discussed between the mayors. It appeared at a meeting on five-twenty-five, which I can give you minute markers, where the Boards of Education's own experts said that the Boards of Education have nothing to do with the cost-sharing agreement of the two towns. So that's just a little background as to how that happened. If Loretta and I could have sat in a, at the diner in her town and come up with a spreadsheet, I mean, we could have come across something, but, you know, fifty or nothing is, two hours before a meeting is a little unnerving. But that is the background on that, so that might have answered a question for somebody. I know it answered about four of yours. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments about this process? You want to...
I have just general questions, not about...
Could you just throw the microphones to the court, give all your information? Yeah?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark Fisher, ninety-one thirty Avenue in Atlantic Highlands, just a couple of questions, and I'm really still confused. I get it with the funding formula. It was the Boards of Education and the two boroughs negotiated, everything's good. Why is the Board of Education involved with the saving sharing? That's a negotiation between the two boroughs. Why are they involved? I don't get it. Why do they have a say in it?
I will invite you to go to a Board of Education meeting to ask... I can't give motivation for someone that is not myself.
But wouldn't that negotiation had to have been with the lawyers of the Boards of Education, Mr. Gagliardi and Mr. Chakov? I mean, they are the negotiators, right? So, somebody is saying that the Board of Education being involved in that discussion, the negotiation about saving sharing, is okay. Somebody has accepted that.
Well, on that last, on that last point, let me say this. You know, we're not writing on a blank slate, right? The idea was it's a joint petition from the six entities, the six entities should agree. People have different ideas about whether it's the mayors who should've gotten started or the boards who've gotten started. As the mayor pointed out, there was discussion at a joint board meeting that they thought it was okay that the mayors get started. And although the mayor described in a very summary fashion the discussion between the mayors, like I said, we weren't involved. I should point out that the original proposal was eighty-eight twelve, so there was compromise, and I think that Atlantic Highlands, again, you have to ask them, has been very communicative to the Boards of Education. And, as you say, it's between the two towns, but when the Boards of Education asked for this cost sharing, Atlantic Highlands would only agree to a formulation that the boards were comfortable with. So, there was never a time when Highlands and Atlantic Highlands received inputs from the Board of Education and were thereafter on the same page. And at this moment, I don't think there's any point in debating, under the statute, should it be Boards of Education, should it be governing bodies? There's a joint petition from all six entities. So, they have to reach agreement on what they want the Commissioner of Education to consider. And I say to the community, if you want this to be successful, the people who have an opportunity to speak with regard to how children are educated and how taxpayers fund it have to be on the same page. I cannot think of an occasion in which we've been involved as council or which we've heard about where something like a reconfiguration of a school district was proposed at a municipality, and a mayor and council were in favor, or the Board of Education was against it, or vice versa. So, for better or for worse, we need to be on the same page, or I do not expect ultimate success.
It just seems like the Boards of Education are setting the pace on the whole saving sharing discussion, rather than the municipalities telling the Boards of Education, "This is what we'd like to do, can you please buy in on it"? Just my thing.
So, if you're not going to a board meeting at the suggestion of the mayor, I would also invite you to go to a borough and council meeting in Atlantic Islands.
Oh, you don't know me. I'm a regular, I have my own things.
Wow, okay.
For the last six years. But thank you for the invitation. Maybe, you know the answer to this, maybe you don't. Why was the special council meeting canceled, like, an hour before it was supposed to be had, a week and a half ago, maybe, the three Boards of Education? Last minute?
Because we would not agree fifty-fifty forever, and we cannot... Also, the main agreement was that we couldn't get out of it. We know from Seabright, but that kind of agreement's gonna do.
Okay.
And the breakdown is pretty clear, right? The mayor and council are not playing in close events. They were willing to accept the fifty-fifty cost share by way of compromise, but only for the first year, and the view was that there has to be regular renegotiation, because the equalized property value and the student enrollment are going to change annually. This was, and I say it again, a significant compromise by the mayor and council in an effort to get everybody on the same page, get this before the commissioner, and then try to get it before the voters as soon as possible. The breakdown was when the school boards and with the school boards, Atlantic Highlands, said, "It's gotta be fifty-fifty in perpetuity, without opportunity to vary", and the mayor and council here were unwilling to accept that, and so that's why there was nothing for the school boards to do that night, because we didn't have an agreement, and at this moment, still don't. And that's really the critical component. Not so much whether there should be a cost sharing, but whether, if there is one, the mayor and council were not in favor of, but if there is one, shouldn't there be an opportunity to modify it as things change over the years? And that, I assure you, will be at the heart of the mediation, regardless of who the mediator is.
So, that was a great segue into my last question. I went to the Atlantic Islands special meeting, and I felt pretty good when I left there. The first of three borough votes were taken, and it was passed. I came here an hour and a half later and heard a completely different story about what had transpired sometime, probably just before the Atlantic Islands meeting and just before your meeting. Now, here, again, I have to go back to the attorneys. The language that was inserted into the ordinance seems like it came from the Boards of Education, for the fifty-fifty with no option to get out of it, in perpetuity. So, I guess that was introduced before the Atlantic Islands ordinance was introduced, but it seems like no one in Highlands knew about it. So, if the ordinance is the same across all three boroughs, how could all three boroughs not have known what the language was before the meetings?
So, the language was not the same in Seabright?
Okay.
Only the funding formula was what Seabright...
Okay, that's right, yeah, there's a little difference, right.
Right. And again, the issue, the focus on this being a saving sharing, it's not an issue for Seabright, it's an issue between Highlands and Atlantic Islands. I am unaware of whatever communications transpired between Atlantic Highlands and the Boards of Education, so I can't answer that part of the question. I can say that when it was presented to us mere hours before the meeting here, the authority we got through the mayor, as I said, was a gracious compromise. If that's what it takes, we'll do this, but we've got to negotiate that every year. I don't know what involvement the Boards of Education attorney had in drafting the actual language, but that viewpoint, the "we'll agree to it, but it can't be in perpetuity", has been and remains the position of the mayor and council here in Highlands.
Just the point there is it just seems like, to me, with hearing all this discussion for the last two years, at the eleventh hour, the Board of Education somehow wrestled control over what went into that ordinance, and it just doesn't seem right. But, again, my thing, thank you.
Thank you, Mark, resolution. It was a resolution, not an ordinance, just sorry for your... Sorry. Does anyone else have anything to say before Muriel comes back? Yeah, Smith, Twenty-Nine London Avenue, Atlantic Islands. What's the meaning of binding? Let's start with that. Binding arbitration?
Well, binding arbitration is, in the context of a contractual arrangement, where the parties agree to go to an arbitrator and have that decision bind the parties the way a judge's decision would bind the parties. That's not what we're talking about for the funding, it's a mediation, where you have a discussion, and the parties are free to get a recommendation from the mediator and not accept it. So, there's no process that would bind the mayor and council if they participate, but that's on the table.
The resolution itself that Atlantic Islands passed said that the fifty-fifty cost sharing would be binding, and that's where I mean, what, how long is binding? Right, so, it doesn't say in perpetuity, whatever that word is, it doesn't say eternally, it's just binding, and I wanna know how long binding is.
So, as far as we're concerned, binding means enforceable, right? So, if there were cost-sharing agreements, it would be enforceable. Well, you could have an enforceable agreement that is modified every year. So, it was never our understanding that it was going to be in perpetuity, because our client didn't authorize that. The, what happened afterwards is, so the resolutions say there's gonna be, you know, the eighty-five fifteen with a binding agreement of fifty-fifty cost sharing. It was when the attorneys, who, again, were not involved in talking with each other, because the boards have an attorney with the accomplice, where we said that the agreement that we're willing to submit to our client is one that is binding, but for the first year, and then, as I said, with the provisions provided in the current law, to be modified, whether it's annually or twice, or every two years, but we never got that far in the discussion, because the viewpoint of Highlands and the Boards of Education was, "It's gotta be fifty-fifty, never to be varied in perpetuity", and as I've said several times this evening, and as I have said several times in the context of those discussions, once it became clear what the apparent failures to mediate was, Highlands has never said and does not say that it's comfortable with a fifty-fifty arrangement without an opportunity to change it. So, you could have a binding agreement that's not in perpetuity, and that's what Highlands was prepared to agree to.
Even if a binding agreement that says every year you're going to sit down, and you're going to look at the numbers and renegotiate, in which case you are agreeing, you will sit down every year.
So, I'll presume that you saw the resolution that Atlantic Islands passed that night? Yes. It doesn't say anything about any time period, it just says binding, that cost sharing would be binding.
And that is why this mayor and council was comfortable passing it that night, because it understood it was gonna be bound by a fifty-fifty agreement, but not that it would be bound by it forever.
So, it's only verbal that we're now learning that it's forever?
The resolution also required the parties to negotiate the specific terms of that agreement, and when it came to sit down to negotiate the terms, it was clear that...
They were already saying?
Right. Atlantic Highlands Board of Ed thought, one thing we thought Highlands thought, something different. And so, there was not a meeting of the minds there with that, once the second Board of Ed was started.
So, you know that there will be a meeting of the minds that way you go into the mediation, is what you're saying there? Because there's nothing in... They didn't adopt anything that says this is gonna be forever?
They come to mediation saying, "This is what this resolution means", no, there's not going to be. But we're hopeful that all of the parties are gonna come to mediation with an eye towards, we wanna work together to get something that we can all present to the Commissioner and the board.
When you said that you learned this a couple of hours before the meeting hearing Highlands, did you know it before? They had their session with Mr. Chakov, or when did you learn it, I guess I should ask?
That day, I mean, I don't remember the precise time, but my understanding is that the superintendent of schools for the tri-district was in discussions with Mark Maggiar and perhaps other, perhaps her finance expert, I really don't know. And there were communications with Matt Chakov, the attorney for Atlantic Highlands, and we were told that as a result of whatever discussions took place, I don't know, that the language that you saw Atlantic Islands doing was the language they had agreed to. And as I've said repeatedly, the mayor and council here were comfortable with the language, and you say it doesn't say perpetuity in that language. So, the understanding was, okay, well, this is what we talked about. We'll swallow hard, we'll go with the fifty-fifty, because we know it's not gonna be that way forever. And it was in the context of case. Now that we passed the resolutions, let's draft an agreement where they were, they made some combination of the folks in Atlantic Highlands and the school boards on the ground who was involved with discussions. So, well, this isn't what we agreed to, you passed a resolution that said fifty-fifty, and our response was just what you said, well, it doesn't say forever, and you never said forever, and it can't be forever. And they said, "Well, it's gotta be forever, or there's no deal", and so they canceled their meeting, and we are where we are.
Oh, the boards canceled their meeting?
The Boards of Ed canceled their meeting.
So, there again, it's the boards that are dictating to the governing bodies of the two towns. But you know, Mark made it pretty clear there, that they don't get involved in taxation, as far as that goes, these are decisions that should be made by the governing bodies of these two towns.
The reason that we are where we are is because it was clear to everyone that the best chance of getting the Commissioner to approve this was to have all six entities on the same page. So, they filed a joint petition, so they have to agree on the way the money is going to be raised from the public in order for the Commissioner to consider that decision. And as far as what's gonna happen in the mediation, I'm not gonna speculate, but the Boards of Education invited us to a competition. They invited us to a mediation, so I don't think that we're gonna walk in and say, "This is the way it's gonna be taken or even", because we don't need to have a meeting for that.
The Boards of Ed invited you to a mediation?
They asked us if we'd be willing to participate in the mediation, that's the mediation we're talking about.
So, then I'll back to, that mediation is gonna include the Boards of Ed?
It's gonna include all six entities who are party to the joint petition before the Commissioner of Education.
Six people never mediate very well, I can tell you that, particularly, most of them are attorneys.
Yeah, well, I don't have any that are gonna be attorneys, it's probably gonna be more than six people, so...
That doesn't work, trust me, that doesn't work. Can you tell me, Atlantic Highlands Elementary School, I understand, has a debt?
Has capital debt, yes, absolutely.
When we go try to, and I say when, we go try to, because we're going to. The, so Highlands is then going to help pick up the debt that the Atlantic Highlands Elementary School has? That's correct. May I ask that that also be part of mediation, that Highlands is gonna be saddled with more debt that they don't have in Highlands? Highlands, I don't worry about the debt at their school. But in...
I'm sorry? Highland Elementary does not, Hudson does. And Hudson's is shared by both towns?
Correct.
So, that one doesn't bother me. But for Highlands to have to pick up Atlantic Highlands' million-dollar debt or something like that, should certainly be a point in negotiation as far as savings goes.
Yeah, that's in our feasibility study, and your point is correct.
I wish you a little yogurt.
If nobody has anything, if anyone has anything to add, I'm gonna close public portion. All right? Does anyone have final comments? All right, just a very, very briefly, just because some of the reasons that things, no things are ever true and equal. We can get to fair or more fair, but things are never equal. This entire discussion has broken down to, you know, as both Muriel and Mark had said, about power struggles, greed, this and that, we should be talking about our kids and tax aids. That's it, not about all of the other stuff. And to get into something forever is just not a big deal. Also, just to give you a little bit of perspective, our values went up a considerable amount from last year to this year, and I'm saying how are as all three towns. These values are over one-hundred-and-twenty-million dollars. Actually, ours was about one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-million dollars, Atlantic Highlands was one-hundred-and-two-million dollars. It's the same increase, these are the increases from year over year, twenty-one to twenty-two. And Seabright's was one-hundred-and-fourteen.
These are assessed values?
These are assessed values. These are gigantic numbers, and this is why in Highlands, your tax rate's gone down the last three years. But just to even show that even though Highlands, sorry, Atlantic Highlands has gone up, their equalized, their value, not equalized value, their assessed value, has gone up to over one-billion dollars this year, twenty-twenty-two. And that is a ten percent year-over-year increase from last year. Seabright's value is just under that, nine-hundred-and-seventy-six-million dollars, that's a twelve percent increase year-over-year. Highlands has gone up to eight-hundred-and-ninety-two-million dollars, which is a fourteen percent increase. increase year-over-year. So just even though those numbers are all staggering, it's a lot of zeros and a lot of numbers, but we're, everyone's moving forward, but at a different pace. And then, we all have our small communities, there's only so much room that you can grow. For us to go up fourteen percent year-over-year is an amazing number, and I'm, not that I'm taking any credit for it, but it's a great number for Highlands. And this is, without the avenue of even getting started rebuilding and filling those empty spots with some type of investment. So those numbers are gonna go nowhere but up. I mean, barring some crazy unforeseen circumstances, we have been steady going up and up and up. And people are interested in our town, and I think it's gonna be very helpful. I don't know if Atlantic has the land that we have now in order to grow. We still have the Shadow Lawn development that's being negotiated between the buyer and prospective sellers. What has been proposed there, that low-rise building is four hundred units, and fifteen percent of that will be affordable. Some of those units are three bedrooms, and it doesn't always, but it likely triggers kids for the school, so that means that our, hopefully, our enrollments will go up. Folks need to be talking about the good stuff that's going on, and hopefully, we can get this squared away with all the parties at the table, and whatever it takes, we need to never stop trying to remember that this is about the kids' education and having that funded and getting some taxpayer savings. I think those are the two most important things that we need to concentrate on, and all of this other stuff is noise in the background. And that's all I have to say about that. I want to thank you for coming out.
I'll maybe just one quick point.
I closed public portion, but do I need to open it again, or do you want to talk offline?
I mean, at this point, the reality is, we just exceeded our assessed valuation precedent.
Oh, we've done that years ago.
Uh-oh, it was last year.
Let me just adjourn. A motion to adjourn? Yes, what's that?
Favor?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you, everyone, meeting adjourned at seven forty-seven.